Good evening. Welcome to Lewiston City Council Meeting, Monday, November 9th, 2015. At this time, we'll call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. It will be led in the pledge by Councilor Maltonato.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item up is Citizen Comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager, and in consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any citizen comments this evening? Come down, name an address for the record, please.
Brian Hensley, 1013 11th Avenue, Lewiston. Lived downtown. My only comment is, I got on the city website and I was noticing that the rates for water had been increased and the sewage rates have been increased. And then I decided to go back to 2010 and I realized that the city has raised their water rates for the downtown people only by 4.7% per year. And that's about twice the inflation that we've had in the last five years. So, I know that Mayor Kleberg wanted to make incremental increases into our water rates and put them away for a new project or replacing our water system. And I was wondering if that extra money is already going into some kind of a fund. And my other question, and I really wonder about this because I really don't understand it, is that our sewage rates in downtown are maybe double what the Central Orchards and the Lewiston Orchard Sewer District. And it was my understanding that all sewer goes to the same place, and I don't understand why downtown pays so much more. And that really, maybe it's in history and politics from the past, I'm not sure. But anyway, that's my two major concerns, and I hope the council looks at that and tries to figure out, because it looks like, oh, and my last concern is if they keep raising rates, you're going to see more yards, residential areas dry up, because people's response to raising water rates is to stop watering. And I know the Rotary Club is really encouraging dogwoods, and I like dogwoods myself, but they're really a thirsty plant, and you gotta water them in order to keep them alive. And so, you know, you have one or the other. When you raise rates and you have fewer people water their lawns, and I see a lot of people just digging up their lawns and putting rock, and you probably noticed it too. So, anyway, that's something to think about when we go forward. Thank you very much.
Mike Lorenz, 458 Crestline Circle Drive. Oh, I had this little memo handed to me. It says, this is dated October 12th, it says, from Councilman Maltonato, it says, "I'm very pleased that we as a city are making the last time we recognized Columbus Day." And I'm thinking, well, when did this thing ever come before the city council to vote on it? Do you take this upon yourself to declare this a non-holiday anymore? I mean, I think it takes a vote of the city council to obviously change that, but maybe it doesn't with this council. You know, but, hey, this is pretty bizarre. You know, next year we'll begin Martin Luther King Day. Well, you know, all these guys that went out and did stuff, they certainly weren't perfect, and they certainly had their faults. But I can guarantee you, if I win guys, Christopher Columbus and all these other explorers, you would be sitting in a mud hut rubbing two sticks together, sonny. You know, these guys, you know, had the courage and fortitude to go out and do this stuff, and to sit here and come up with some, you know, quack deal like this is not very becoming, I guess. Thank you.
My name is Mark Adleblud. I live at 1730 8th Avenue Boulevard. I want to reiterate what Mr. Hensley had to say about water rates. I called Mayor Kleberg about, after I'd seen in the paper that his, that he was wanting to continue to raise water to supposedly support whatever work or whatever they think is going to be doing, going on with this, our water treatment plant. If I'm not mistaken, we've been raising water rates in this town since Jeff Nessa was on board on this council, supposedly for monies for that water treatment plant. I just was, would like to kind of know maybe what's happened with all these dollars that have been raised since, that's been maybe, what, 15 years ago? Some of my water bills this summer were through the roof. And I do have, you know, a couple of lots where I live, I try to raise a small garden to help with, I have a sister and some relatives on the prairie that can't raise things like tomatoes and things like that, but at the way water is gone, it's basically not going to be very practical. I, I'm not sure if any of you live downtown. Do any of you that are on the council live downtown?
Do you consider the Reno area downtown?
I do. You pay, you're paying probably the same kind of water rates that I pay, only have domestic water, there's no irrigation system. You've got, all you people that are voting to raise water for people like me who live downtown, I don't think is right. I mean, I think we fought a revolution over unfair taxation, and that's what you people are doing. And you've got, like he, like Mr. Hensley said, people all over town in the, especially in the lower income neighborhoods, the older neighborhoods, people are letting their yards dry up, trees are dying. I, it hurts my, me to see people let their yard just go to hell like that. But another thing I wanted to talk about was, you're supposedly going to vote tonight on what you're doing up on 18th Avenue. I talked to Mr. Davies several months ago about what you guys were doing on 18th Avenue, and he informed me that you'd had some reports of speeding on 18th Avenue. Now, I don't know what you've spent between 17th Street and 10th Street, or, yeah, 10th Street, because from what I read, this money you're getting ready to approve is for, only from 8th Street over to 10th Street. So if you're going to spend 200 and some thousand in two blocks, I, I have, and I have to think you've spent a hell of a lot between 10th and 17th where you've put all these little mini roundabouts and these speed bumps and things like that. It blows me away that we wouldn't at least try some, just some stop signs, and maybe if we had to put a patrolman up there to deal with traffic. You've got 18th Avenue, 17th Avenue, and 16th Avenue are the only streets that run straight through until you get clear down to 11th Avenue. Across town, traffic flow in this town is terrible. And so people are using 18th Avenue to avoid going down to the light and crossing on 16th. But that doesn't mean we have to spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I'm sure you've got some kind of a grant to do that work. But we still have to come up with all these dollars from the city, plus the strings that are attached to those grants. And to me, it's, it's, I see this, just like that tunnel out here on Snake River Avenue. We just throw all our money, and no wonder we don't have money to do things that we really need. There's no sidewalks around, up in the orchard, you go up there, and even a lot of the downtown area, there's no sidewalks. But yet, you guys, well, anyway, I just would like to see a little more fiscal responsibility in terms of the way this council spends money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mary Eglin, and I live at 2511 Valley View Court, Unit A, here in Lewiston. And I'm actually here to represent the Royal Plaza Retirement Facility's senior population as well as Trune and Brookdale. I am the executive director for Royal Plaza, so I will be speaking directly for 105 residents that we currently have living in our facility. I brought some maps, but they're not very good, but I will use them to refer to the streets in that location. Currently, most people probably know on Nesburst Drive, there's some development going on, as well as up Juniper, Juniper Drive. We have a new hotel going in, the Eye Clinic, as well as proposed for advanced healthcare to have a 28-bed rehabilitation facility put in there. And North Forty Outfitters, just south of that, has opened up. Juniper Drive has become a through street for people to avoid 21st and Thane. The traffic is getting very heavy up there, not only due to avoiding 21st Street, but because of the new development in that area. The safety of the residents who utilize the sidewalks that are up there is my concern, because there is not currently any crosswalks that are marked. On Juniper, from Regent's Court now to Port Drive, there are sloped areas where residents using walkers or wheelchairs can cross. However, that's where traffic seems to speed through, it's kind of on a bend. And I have emailed a few times back and forth with Iris, who works for the city, requesting ADA ramps be put in at that already sloped area, as well as a marked crosswalk. I was told that the budget was very limited for any more installation of the ADA ramps and crosswalk area. She did suggest, however, doing the flag, pedestrian flag, but with the population in that area, that's not very realistic for them to hold a flag using a walker or wheelchair to manage the streets to make sure that they stay safe in crossing. So I'm just requesting that the area of Regent's and Port Drive along Juniper and up to Cypress, that that area be looked at for a potential installation of a crosswalk for the safe usage of the walking path and sidewalks that are installed. So, any questions?
Questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Get a copy of that? Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to read consent agenda unless anybody wants to pull something off, put it on active.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. To read the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the minutes, excuse me. Approving the minutes of the October 4th, 2015 regular meeting and the October 26th, 2015 regular meeting. Accepting the minutes of the September 9th and the October 14th, 2015 Youth Advisory Commission. Approving a bid award for self-contained breathing apparatus to General Fire Apparatus Incorporated of Spokane, Washington in the amount of $328,079.16. And approving the vouchers payable dated October 9th through October 22nd, 2015 in the amount of $1,727,220.60.
Okay, councilors, the consent agenda's been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we'll move on to the active agenda. This will be the second reading of Ordinance 4639 by title only, suspending the rules, adding Lewiston City Code Section 8-48, setting forth rules and regulations related to dog parks operated by the city of Lewiston. Entertain a motion to read for the second time.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Approving the second reading of Ordinance 4639 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, adding Lewiston City Code Section 8-48, setting forth rules and regulations related to dog parks operated by the city of Lewiston, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Carrie. Ordinance 4639's been read for the second time. Next up, Item B. This is a third reading, potential third reading and adoption by roll call vote of Ordinance 4638, amending City Code Section 2-1, updating the statutory citation for the Idaho Public Records Act by title only, suspending the rules. Entertain a motion to read for the third time.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Call in favor, say aye. Aye.
Approving the third reading of Ordinance 4638 by title only, suspending the rules, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending Lewiston City Code Section 2-1, updating the statutory citation for the Idaho Public Records Act, and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, Ordinance 4638 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 4638 by roll call vote.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Councilor Maltonato.
Aye.
Councilor Blakely.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Councilor Daniel.
Aye.
Councilor Collins.
Aye.
Councilor Randall.
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes seven to zero. Next up is Resolution 2015-52, amending the rates, fees, and equity buy-in charges for water, wastewater, residential, and commercial mobile cart, solid waste service, and commercial container solid waste service for fiscal year 2016. Since we've had some comments this evening, Mr. Bennett, would you like to explain this?
Members of the council, Public Works Director Chris Davies is here tonight, and he's going to explain the impact of this resolution.
Okay. Keep in mind, this is actually more of a bookkeeping situation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is a correction to the past resolution that you did in August 24th. Resolution 215-46 actually set all the new rates in place for water, wastewater, and sanitation. And the purpose of that original resolution on the 24th was to put all the rates for our services into one resolution, where in the past, we typically would bring, if we were going to raise just the water rates, we'd bring them to city council and they'd pass them under one resolution. And what we found that was happening is that we tended to lose track of where rates were, because we would have multiple resolutions establishing rates for water, wastewater, and sanitation. So beginning this year, it was our intent to consolidate all those rates into one resolution with the understanding that some of them may not change. So if you looked at the sanitation, those rates didn't change. In reviewing the resolution after it was passed by city council, I noticed that I had made an error. So if you look on page 10 of your proposed resolution, under Dropbox rate per dump, it's section three there, the last six lines where it says 10 cubic yards per construction per, for Nesburst County, those lines were not included. We aren't changing the rates, we're just including them in the resolution, so they're all in one place. And then if you go to page, page 11, under Section 6, it would be commercial additional per cubic yard, so it'd be the fifth line up from the bottom of that block, where it's $22.45. We had that in the original resolution that we passed in August, but we had the wrong rate. We aren't, we aren't changing the rate, we just had it wrong in both columns. So those are the only two changes, or those are the additions and changes that are being proposed in this resolution. Nothing else is being added, or changed from the resolution that was passed in August. Any questions or more clarification?
Any questions for Mr. Davies? Council Collins.
Just a real quick question. At, at the time that this was approved of in August, the changes that we see here are changes that actually did occur, though, in, in the actual rates themselves.
That is correct.
Did we do, did we go a month in charging the old rate without knowing this, or was the new rate actually applied, just not listed in here?
The, make sure I understand the question. With respect to the rates that we've added in this resolution?
So we changed the rates, but did we go a month without changing the rates of the ones that weren't actually listed?
No, because those rates that we've added in this month, or in, that will, if you approve it, were not changed at all.
Okay.
That's up.
Yes, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Davies.
You're welcome.
So, does roll call, or, okay. So entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2015-52.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, now this next item, for the fire pumper purchase, apparently today we had some new communication with the company, so I'm going to request a motion to amend the agenda.
Yes.
Okay. To reflect the new cost of the, of the fire pumper purchase.
Just need somebody to move?
Yes.
They move that we amend the agenda.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. And Chief Michael Bus is here to explain that change, if you'd be so kind.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can you vote on amending the agenda first?
Oh, okay. So we have a motion and a second on amending the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Daniels.
We should probably mention what the, the amount was that we're amending the agenda to read.
Well, I think Chief can cover that.
Okay, alright.
I'm hoping Chief can cover that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what I want to do is bring you up to date on, one, the reason for the amendment to the council agenda tonight, and then, two, to answer any questions related to the purchase of this pumper. We've been working on this with our spec committee for about the past four to six months, coming up with the spec of what, what the fire department and what our fleet maintenance needed for a replacement apparatus. And so we've been working through that, and now we're at the stage of the final portion of the, of the cost of it. And when we were provided with the, the final cost, and we, we published the agenda with the $465,238, the paperwork that was provided to us had actually three options for rebates that would help offset the cost of the pumper apparatus by prepaying three months of a portion of it prior to the pumper being completed, finishing off the payment once we, we pick up the apparatus. And then they had 100%, which was actually almost $15,000 on the bid. After talking with Director Marsh and looking at the financial of paying for a pumper 100% upfront with a 10 and a half to 13-month build seemed, one, cash flow issue and to be a concern. And then the other was a performance bond that, that the city feels definitely having the performance bond added into that as a protection for the city as the, as the pumper's being purchased, and that was $1,345. So if we added those back in, we were actually sitting at $486,076. So today, I've been working with Pierce, the manufacturer, and talking about options of if we were to have other payment options. And, and what we were presented today was another option, if we were to pay $175,000 down in the initial, we got an additional $6,927 adjustment, which takes us down to the, the 4700, or $474,649 total. And what that allows to, it has the performance bond built into it, it does give us the reductions for the payment three months out, and then finishing it when we get there. So we've tried to bend as best. Part of it is why we brought this with amendment tonight and not putting off to the next council meeting, which is scheduled for November 30th, is on December 1, the prices of the pumper apparatus all go up $20,000. It's when the new grant goes, or their new bid system goes into play. So we're trying to be as frugal as we can with the taxpayers' dollars to get under that mark and make sure that we get the apparatus ordered. And like I said, it's going to be a 10 and a half to 13-month build time of this pumper apparatus. So that is the reason for the, the amendment and where we ran into those, those cost breaks down. I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that council may have.
Any questions for the chief?
I've got one.
Certainly.
What do you, what do you think that the, the replace, or the one that we're replacing is going to be worth on the?
You know, we've had a lot of interest already from smaller departments outside. Normally, these are the smaller communities, you know, 2,000 population or below. And if we look at the one we, we sold four years ago, I believe we, we brought in about $20,000, we feel this one's probably going to bring in 20 to 25. Obviously, it'll go out to bid and have that competitive bid process. We're also going to advertise it on a, a regional fire site that we did with our reserve firefighters. It goes through Alaska, all the way through California, as far to the east as Wyoming. We feel to broaden that advertisement, we're going to get a better dollar for that, that piece of apparatus. But that's kind of where we're guessing, the 20 to 25,000 range.
Okay. And you're proposing to take some funds out of the fleet replacement fund to cover the difference?
That's correct.
And this would go back into?
Yep. Once we, once we receive the new engine, and we would then immediately sell the other one, and those funds would go back into the fleet.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Randall.
I remember seeing in a newspaper where another fire department purchased an engine, and it was like around 600,000. Can you explain the difference?
Certainly. We actually, I talked to a lot of chiefs who have purchased apparatus, because the one thing is I want to make sure that we are being as frugal as we can with the taxpayers' dollars. We need to be aware of that. A Sooton County Fire District, one across the river, or received a, an Impel Pierce, which is just like our engine we bought in 2012, their total price was $593,000. I had a meeting with Chief Heston and Pullman today. They're in the process of specking out their new engine, and they have budgeted $625,000 for theirs. So we feel we've been very good with, you know, we actually reduced a chassis to help save some funds due to the cost of this, so we've tried to be as, as best we can with the taxpayers' dollar, and yet still make sure we're providing a, a safe apparatus on the roadways for our citizens and the firefighters, and have all the operational needs and the needs of the fleet. Because fleet is involved when we, when we build the design of these engines to make sure that they can work on it, and, and it saves hours there. So those are the two recent ones that we had, and then we also had Clarkson Fire had a grant, and they just opened a bid for a brush vehicle a week ago, and it was 198, or almost $199,000 for a brush truck. So, yeah, we feel we've done quite well getting where we are today with this cost.
Okay. Council Randall.
Also, isn't there a consortium that we're involved with?
There is. We're utilizing the HGAC, which was what council went forward with back in 2012. This is a joint purchasing agreement, and what it allows us to do is get much more competitive pricing. A Sooton County did not use that. I don't know if that had as big of an impact, but obviously their, their cost of their apparatus was much more higher than what ours is.
Thank you. You bet.
Are there any statistics out there that compares cities, the cities of Lewiston, maybe the cities in the Northwest, cities of Idaho, or the cities in the Northwest, average age of their fleet? And where are we in that picture?
We are. Actually, we try to follow, there's, there's an NFP standard that strongly recommends fire apparatus for our size of a department with our volume to replace at 20 years. We're replacing this as, we've taken it out 22 years. Part of that is due to our fleet. They do a great job of keeping those in service. But what happens over time is not only do you get the wear and tear, but then parts start to become extremely difficult to become available. You can ask the airport authority right now with the, the ARF truck that they own, and the difficulty we're having with trying to find parts for that. And that vehicle is 22 years. And that vehicle is 22 years old. So, yeah, that's one of the things we're running into, which keeps it then out of service longer and affects our operations.
But again, the question I was asking, is there any scale out there that says our average age of our equipment is such and such compared to the city of Boise, the city of Pocatello, the city of Coeur d'Alene? Is there any kind of comparisons done like that?
I've not seen one. It would be easy to call those departments. I do know that Coeur d'Alene is in the process of replacing their apparatus, and one of their pumpers is 26 years old. They also had to pass a public safety bond to pay for their engines because they don't have a fleet replacement plan like we do. But I would be happy to do some research to kind of compare, because it's interesting. I haven't done that. But I do know most departments shoot for that 20-year mark.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Randall.
That age of fire equipment, does that have any bearing on the, oh, the rating bureau when they come in?
It does. The biggest is more not necessarily the age, but the pumping capacity, and that it's currently passing pump testing. And we do find, because we annually test our apparatus, what we're finding is that when you start getting to that 18-year mark, we usually have the engines in the shop well before the pump testing so that they can pack the pump, sometimes rebuild the pump so it can pass the test. So, yeah, if we had one that didn't pass, that would have a big impact on our survey and rating coming through with the assessment.
You're talking about the ISO rating?
Yep.
Okay.
Which we're coming up on in two years.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so this is for the purchase of a pump truck, and so it's basically ordered to enter into a contract I would recommend by roll call vote.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the fire pumper purchase in the amount of $474,649 by roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. We have a discussion. All those in favor say aye.
We're doing a roll call.
Aye. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. By roll call.
Counselor Maldenato.
Aye.
Counselor Blakey.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Daniel.
Aye.
Counselor Collins.
Aye.
Counselor Randall.
Aye.
Thank you, counselors. Okay, next up, it's going to be potential bid award for the 18th Avenue Project, 8th to 10th Streets. This is a rebid from back in March, I believe.
The library?
Yeah, library.
Oh, sorry. I wrote my notes down on the wrong column. We're back to item E, I'm sorry. Bid award, Lewiston Library's second-floor accessibility improvements project, and this is a rebid also. This is accepting the bid proposal of Quality Contractors LLC of Deary, Idaho, for the base bid and add alternates 1, 2, and 3 in the amount of $157,672. This is for the second-floor accessibility project for the restrooms, I believe. Mr. Bennett, you want to explain this?
Well, our library director, Alexa Eckles, is here tonight, so I will let her go ahead and go over how we rebid this project.
Thank you. Alexa?
This is partially funded by a community development block grant, so it is some accessibility improvements to the library. It is the second-floor bathroom, as well as an automatic opener on the Fifth Street entrance.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have...
Counsel Blakey.
Yeah, I have some questions. Is this the appropriate time for discussion, or do you want to wait until after, or is this, ask some questions about how we got the prices and stuff?
I think this is appropriate.
Okay. Alexa, I see that the library board has authorized $80,000 to be applied towards this project. That's down on page one on budget impact. Was that $80,000 applied after, was that $80,000 set aside when the first bid that came in over, when it came in too high? Was that $80,000 set aside then too? Or is that $80,000 been added recently as a set aside? And if it has, is it coming out of the money that the foundation has pledged towards meeting our goals of recently what we approved in our budget, the $500,000 this year, and again next year, or possibly next year?
That's a good question. The $80,000 was recently voted to be put towards this project. The funds were in the library's trust account. It is a combination of community donations, such as from the foundation, such as from fines, fees, items like that are what is put into the trust account. It is not the half a million dollars that the foundation has pledged at this point.
My question is, is it coming out of the same pot, though? Or is it coming out of a separate pot? I understand it's not, budget-wise, it hasn't been pledged, but did it come out of that pot, though?
The foundation has currently not given any funds to the city towards that half a million dollar contribution for the Phase Two. So these are funds that existed before that in the trust account.
This is out of the capital account for the library.
It's a trust account. I don't know if someone else wants to explain it a little better than I can. The library does have a building fund as well. The trust account is, if you will, a holding account that only the library board of trustees has control over expenditures from it. And so the board of trustees has transferred $80,000 from the trust account into the library building fund.
Counsel Daniel.
How much is in the trust account?
I wouldn't be able to give you an exact dollar. I do have...
We do have Mr. Marsh here.
I can give you a date, as of September 14. There was $114,542.30.
Okay, that's good enough. I was just curious. As of December 31?
As of September 14.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you are also correct as well. The trust fund, the money flows, and it is accounted for in the library capital. And then the way the work, or the dollars will flow is, once the second-floor project begins, the library, foundation will approve their funds, they'll be billed, and it will go through that same account.
Okay.
But all separate accounting.
Okay. Counsel Collins.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking for a clarification. You indicated that the trust account is controlled by the trustees?
The library board of trustees that you appoint.
And some of the money that went in, went in, or does go into the trust account comes from fines and fees at the library?
It currently does, yes.
What are the other sources of funds that go into that? I mean, where's, you said donations?
Sometimes grants go into that. We've received several grants in the past for meeting room, furniture, things like that, and so that is often the account that they'll go into. They are generally for capital projects.
Thank you. So, Mr. Marsh can probably answer this better. So is this similar to what we have in our parks and recreation budget, where we obtain funds from, say, reservations of parks and things like that?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think that's a very good analogy. It's still city-controlled, but it comes from our community. In the library's case, and Parks and Rec, even on the utility bill, a citizen can donate a dollar, $5, $10. So, yes, it's under the city's control, the city owns the money, but because of that liaison and connection with the community, we look to the advisory boards, in this case the foundation, to recommend spending it.
Further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I've entertained a motion to approve the bid award for the library's second-floor accessibility improvements project in the amount of $157,672.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, I move that we approve by roll call vote.
By roll call? Okay, thank you.
Second.
Got a second? Okay. You want discussion? Okay.
I think you have to ask.
Okay.
If there's any discussion, then no one would say something.
Is there any discussion?
Counsel Maldenato.
Aye.
Counselor Blakey.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Daniel.
Aye.
Counsel Collins.
Aye.
Counsel Randall.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, seven to zero. Okay, now, next up, potential bid award for the 18th Avenue Project, 8th to 10th Streets. This is also a rebid, accepting the bid of United Contracting and Towing LLC of Lewiston, Idaho, in the amount of $231,430.30. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we have our city engineer, Alana Bailey, here tonight, who can go over the project with you and answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel. This is for the award of 18th Avenue from 8th Street to 10th Street. This is a rebid. The original bid was about a month ago. We had one bid that was irregular because it didn't fill in one of the unit prices, so we rebid it, and this is what we came up with. There were two bids this time. Do you have specific questions regarding the project?
Any questions for Alana? How did this bid compare with the last one, or do you remember?
It is a little higher. The first bid was under the engineer's estimate by approximately 5%, and this one is over by approximately 9%.
Okay.
And it is the same bidder that was the low both times.
Correct. Second question. So when we issued the contract, I know there's a 60-day completion time, but when are we going to allow them to start? Since it's getting to that time of year, and asphalt plants might not be running at full capacity, as it were.
Right, we expect them to start in the spring.
Okay. Just so we're square on that. Any other questions? Why didn't it... Oh, Counsel Blakey.
If this council seemed fit to want to also to approve in the springtime other improvements on that street, such as the streets between the traffic circles on the south side, that I know, I say they're uncompleted, but I actually know in the bid, they were never to be done, so you can't say they're not completed because they were never intended to be finished off. Would there be some reason to want to consider shelving this? If the council was to see fit to appropriate money for that project, could there be a cost savings?
I'm not sure with the funding agency if we can push it forward again, because there is some federal funds that are associated with this project. My recommendation would be, if you wanted to include those improvements, we'd add them in the spring under a separate contract.
Counsel Daniel.
I remember last time this was in front of us, Counsel Blakey brought up some concerns, and at the time, I was just, I was kind of just, just like this bid is just for 8th to 10th Street, it's separate from the main portion of 18th Ave. But I'm kind of leaning with Counsel Blakey. I kind of have some concerns on where, what the long-term plan is for 18th Ave. I've actually driven it a couple times in the past couple weeks, just, it's usually not a road I ever drive on because it's just, I have no reason to, if I have, just for the sake of doing it. I could see how there'd be a few residents that actually really like it, and I also see why some really don't. So I would, I guess, maybe be in favor of tabling this until the next work session and possibly discuss what our long-term plans are with that corridor. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that.
Well, I don't know if I'd be necessarily in favor of tabling this, but I agree with Alana that, you know, maybe it's appropriate that we discuss the second phase, because it's not like we're going to be able to take this bid and add a bunch of other stuff into it. Unfortunately, that's not the way it works.
Well, I'm not saying that.
This is what's on the table. I know that the quote-unquote unfinished section has been a concern to some people, but this is not dealing with that. And I don't have any problem addressing that other section and putting it into a separate bid, but, I mean, to muddy the waters with this specific bid, when we've got a responsive bidder, I don't know that I'm necessarily willing to table or change the agreement we have in front of us right now.
Well, I'm not talking about trying to add things into this bid. What I'm thinking is, there seems to be a lot of confusion by not just residents, but just the taxpayer in general. What exactly is our long-term plan with that corridor? So I guess I'll just, and if this motion fails, I'll go ahead and support the bid. I get the merits, there's nothing wrong with the bid itself, but I move that we table this bid award until the next regular scheduled city council 3:00 p.m. work session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Mayor, a question on the front page here. It says, "The bid amount is higher than available grant funding, but additional funds have been allocated in the capital transportation fund." Where do those additional dollars come from? Or how much is the total additional dollars?
I don't have that information in front of me. It is about $201,000, from my memory, I'm speaking, that is the grant. So the additional money is match money that comes from staff in-kind work, as well as the capital program.
But how much of an increase are we looking at coming out of the capital fund? Like, do you have a percentage, ballpark, any idea?
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Counsel Daniel.
You know, with the motion I just made, that's why I'm, I'm not rejecting this bid. I would just like to have an opportunity for us to review 18th Avenue as a whole at the next work session before we go forward with this. I don't have a problem with this bid award by itself, but there seems to be some confusion by residents and even the council. We don't really have a long-term plan on what we even want to do with this avenue. I think those of us that have driven that are a little surprised in how it drives. So I would just like to have a discussion, be, I don't know when the next meeting, the next regular, what date that is, so that's why I mentioned that it'd be the next regularly scheduled meeting.
If it helps, I did bring some copies of what the plans look like for this. I can show you what the plan is for these two blocks.
I'm going to talk about those two. I appreciate it.
Counsel Randall.
Is there a final due date for the, any federal money that we have to meet?
The federal money was for this year, and so I don't know what happens if it doesn't get awarded, if it continues to roll out. I would have to ask ITD.
The only concern I was, is trying to, if we did table it, do we have a timeline that we have to come up with an answer?
I don't know.
Counsel Blakey.
I appreciate, and I thank Counsel Daniel's thoughts and comments here on this. I drive the road four times a day, and ever since I've lived in Lewiston, it's been since 1990. And I guess the part I object to here is, it's literally the widest part of 18th is what we're talking about. The two blocks we're looking at addressing, if you were to take a tape measure, it's the widest part of the road right now. And I don't see the sense if we're going to narrow it down, and I have looked at the blueprint plans. We're not really going to do much for narrowing it. We're going to add a little bit of curb work, a little bit of sidewalk work, but again, it's on the side of the street where the sidewalk is, it's not continual. Stops, starts, it stops, it starts, much like all of Lewiston. I understand the part. I suppose there's a part of me that says, I can approve this, because if you do the math, out of pocket, it's about $17,000 out of the pocket of the city of Lewiston taxpayers. The balance of it is paid by federal government. So, you know, there is a part of me that says, hey, that's a good deal, we can get a lot of bang for our buck for $17,000. The other side is, you know, that 17, if we didn't do anything, I'm not sure 8th Street would stop functioning any better, any worse than it does now. And that 17,000 potentially goes back into the budget, used somewhere else, and/or, if we want, tax relief, however we want to do that, a small amount would add up to, but it could be re-appropriated somewhere else in an area of more need.
Well, I'm going to go on the record as saying, if we blow this off, which is potentially what I'm hearing here, that when you go through this process to get this kind of money from the federal government, and you go through that whole process of getting the grants, and then you decide, oh, thanks, but no thanks, you get stuck at the back of the line for any other thing you want down the road. any other thing you want down the road. We're talking about two blocks of Eighteenth Avenue right here. That's what we're talking about. Not talking about the other part that maybe people think is not finished, which we can address through our budget process and stuff like that. We've got the grant funding in place, and for us to not go forward with this, I think is a huge mistake, and I guess I'm not sure why we're having this discussion. I'm sorry.
Well, just, I just want to say again, this isn't saying we're not going to go forward, it's just we're going to pause and take, I guess if we, if the council does vote to table this, just, we're going to take a brief pause to review the whole plan before we go forward. Provide greater visibility, provides citizens a better opportunity to come and address their concerns with us, and who knows where it will go from there. I have a feeling that after tabling this, we'll probably all vote to go ahead and award this bid, but I guess we'll see.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Protem?
So when we first started this Eighteenth Avenue project, there was several surveys done, or there was at least like a barbecue or a gathering or something like that, right, where they got all the citizens around that neighborhood and got their input? Have we gotten any further input from that neighborhood since?
Since the construction?
Yes.
Not that I've been made aware of.
Okay, so I'd be in favor of this amendment so that we can hear further input from the citizenry?
Mr. Davies?
Counsel and Mayor, I guess just a couple of comments. If we, I know that decision isn't to not do the project, but if we put a hold on the project, we, if I, I don't know state law, but if, I think we have 30 days to accept the bid in good faith. Now, I think the next council meeting is on the 30th of November, so decision, we push it past that, then we're into December, and I think we're past that 30 days. A couple of other comments. If council decides not to do the project, I'm just saying if that's the end result, there is still a cost to the city, because we have done pre-planning and all the engineering, and we will be responsible for the full amount, not 7%, but 100%. That's part of the rules when we go through these processes. I don't have that amount before me, but I just want you to be aware, when you don't do a construction project, the city becomes liable for the full cost.
We had the same issue at the roundabout when we were proposing not doing the roundabout. Is that correct?
Accept a contract.
Yeah.
That is correct.
And once you're in bed, feds, you're on the hook.
And we have told council, every time we come and start a contract with the federal, or with ITD, that involves federal money, we say, once you sign this contract, we're committed through construction.
Thank you for reeducating me.
The third thing is typically, I guess I want to reiterate, when we started this project, the city did go out to the neighborhood and inform them of what this project was going to look like, and we did get input. That's how we helped design it. Typically, we don't look at a street, and I'm not sure where council wants to go with this, but typically, we don't look at a street like Eighteenth and say, what's the future going to happen here? Because typically, things change. I mean, we could guess what's going to happen in the next 10 years, but it's just a guess. We know what, when we did the design here, we knew what was going to be happening, but we don't typically look at every street in the city and say, what's the future's going to look like on those roads? Just general comments.
Any other comments? Questions for Mr. Davies? Council Randall?
I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I think we should proceed with this project, but with the reservation that we do put it in discussion for a work session.
I have absolutely no problem with that. Again, follow up with the neighborhood. Further comments? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Need a roll call? Okay. So motion table fails five to. So back to the original, well, I guess I didn't ask for an original motion. Thank you.
Mr. Davies? I will ask, I want to, there'll be a question and discussion I want to ask you.
Don't go too far.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? A move that we approve by roll call vote.
Okay, we have motion to approve bid award on Eighteenth Avenue by roll call vote.
Second.
We have motion and second. Discussion?
Mr. Davies, I was just following up your expertise on Mr. Kleberg's comment. Is it true that when you say we walk away from this bid, do we really get a black mark against us in the bidding process at the state level, federal level, and we get put into the sin bin?
It's a tough, yes and no. And it's tough to answer, because we're in an MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. And basically, in a nutshell, this is what happens. The federal government gives the state money, $2 billion. The state takes their share, and then they give the MPO, say, $500,000. All the POs in the state meet twice a year, and they decide where that money's going to go. So everybody's planning where those dollars are going to be spent. We've already told the MPO, we want this project by our signing of the contract over a year ago, saying we wanted to build this project. Now we're telling them, potentially, I'm saying, if we don't do the project, what you're going to send back is this message is, well, we decided we don't want to do it because we want to relook at things. Doesn't look great, because somebody else could be going, well, if I would have known that a year ago, I could have submitted my project. Not necessarily a black mark, but not a great thing to do.
And the money goes back to the MPO or goes back to the state?
Goes back to the MPO, and if they can't use it, it goes back to the state.
But I would think that there's other jobs out there, other cities that are online, just like us, to say, how fast you can get a bid in?
They will snatch up the money, and we will, we will lose it.
Council Daniel?
Well, now that my motion failed, I mean, just looking at the bid alone, just looking at the bid award alone itself, you know, I'll go ahead and support it, but there's nothing wrong, there's, I can't, what you're saying is, elected officials never have a right to review something to see if it's the right way to do things. If it's, if they've already tentatively agreed to something, they're locked into it, and it'd be, it'd be a shame if an elected official re-looked at something to make sure they're doing something right. You know, in the past, you, since I've been on the council, you've kind of changed what you've said. Earlier on in my four years, you said that if we backed out of something like this, we could be on the hook for the money, that it's not at all an absolute. And in the past two years, you've changed that to, we're absolutely on the hook. Which one is it?
I would disagree with you, counselor. I don't think I've changed my ten.
Okay. You have.
Once you start the design process and spend money, that in a sense puts you on the hook. Is that how it works?
Once you sign the contract, you are in the, you are locked into that position. The state and the federal government is assuming you're going to go through the project. There's, I agree with you, counselor, that if you feel, and the city council feels, that it's not worth the project, you can back out of it, but you also have the liability of paying that back to the federal government.
Sure. Didn't quite, so we are 100% if you back out on something, you absolutely, there is no wiggle room, there is, you absolutely do have to pay those funds back, just so the council is clear going forward.
That's what the rules say.
Okay.
That's what I'm telling you, is that's what the rules say. I have never been through that process. I can't tell you if the federal government's going to say, well, in this case, we're going to let you go. I don't make the rules, I don't enforce them.
Council Blakely?
So in this case here, I do understand, I'm not asking for anything, just a ballpark idea here, because I know you don't have the numbers in front of you, so if you choose not to answer the question, that's fair too. Is, were those engineering design costs, would they be greater than our 7.3%? I mean, right now, it's $17,000. Which is the lesser of the two evils? Walking, you know, the $17,000 we'd save, design costs are more than that.
I can't answer that question. I would be glad to get the information and pass it on to council.
Future information.
I, it's my recommendation that, as a public works director, that you do the project. It's your decision.
I guess in the future, for our, I'd make a comment to our city council and future city councils, that we probably as city council members do a better job of identifying these future costs that are, that go along with some of these federal contracts, because it does seem like, like Clinton was saying, you're penalized if you want to change your mind down the road, and that's the way the contracts work. But again, sometimes it's in the best interest of the taxpayers to sometimes say no, but there's a cost to say no. We have to keep reminding ourselves what those costs are to say no.
And I wouldn't disagree, counselor, and I think in the past, I'll put it on Public Works, we haven't been doing that, but in, I believe since this fiscal year, I'll say at least since this fiscal year, we have included those costs, and when we come in an awarding project saying, if we don't do it, this is what the cost will be to the city. And we can certainly include that in our discussion on the agenda items to the city council, as an item, so that they're aware of it and they know the cost.
Yeah, it's a good reminder for all of us. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for roll call vote.
Council Maldonado.
Aye.
Council Blakely.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Councilor Daniel.
Aye.
Council Collins.
Aye.
Council Randall.
Aye.
Thank you, counselors. And I apologize if I came off a little bit strong on that, but I also agree with Councilor Daniel that perhaps for our December 7th work session, perhaps we could give you a brief presentation on what would be involved to revisit the other portion of Eighteenth that some people think is not quite finished. Is that possible to do?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I think that would be wise. Thank you. Okay. Next item up, we've got vouchers payable to Albertson's from 10/9/15 through 10/22/15, the amount of $32.38. Entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertson's with Councilor Daniel abstaining.
So moved.
Second.
Most of them made in second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero, two, one, with Councilor Daniel abstaining. Next item is vouchers payable to Pathologist Regional Lab from 10/9/15 through 10/22/15, the amount of $84.35 with Protem Johnson abstaining. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Most of them made in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six, zero, two, one, with Mayor Protem Johnson abstaining. That concludes our active agenda. We'll move on to unfinished and new business. City council comments, do we have any this evening?
URA meeting tomorrow at noon at City Hall, back offices, and it is televised, so an opportunity to watch it if you can't be there.
Okay. Who else? Council Collins?
Uh, this week is, we have our Veterans Day, and I believe Saturday is our Veterans Day Parade at 11:11 a.m., and would love to see as many people out there as possible.
Okay. Any others? I've got a couple. First of all, I'd like to take everybody that took the time to go out and vote, it doesn't matter who you voted for, but it seems to me that we had a bigger turnout than we had four years ago, which I think is a good thing, but it was still just under 20%. So, yeah, I just encourage people to get involved, vote. Your vote does matter, and I think it's important as a citizen, not just the city, but the country. On a brighter note, I guess I'll take this time to wish a happy 21st birthday to Jesse Maldonado. Council Maldonado is finally 21. I guess he can legally go out and imbibe some of the products his dad's been peddling for years at the Brew Fest, so I think that's great. Congratulations, Jesse.
Thank you, sir.
The other thing is, we've had some discussion about water bills and stuff like that, and I'm not going to get into all the details, but, you know, Mr. Alabut was correct, he did come, well, he called me on the phone at work, and it wasn't necessarily the greatest conversation, but I think we agreed to disagree. So I went back up to Lloyd to determine what I'm actually paying, and when I factor in all of my stuff, yeah, I'm probably getting off a little cheaper than maybe people that are downtown that water their lawns all the time. But what it comes up with, when you figure out my irrigation rates, which are not free, by the way, that's $196 a year on my lot, and keeping in mind that $196 that I pay a year, if you factor in the amount of time that I could not water, I was only able to water two days a week, you can do the extrapolation, and water is fairly expensive when you get to use it.
It'll get more expensive.
Oh, I know that, sir. Believe me, I was going to mention that, because, you know, as they drill the wells and they're going to put the power bill on the backs of the people in the orchards, it is certainly going to be very expensive to water your lawn up there. But as far as the, as far as meter rate for domestic and stuff, it is slightly, slightly, hang on a second here, I want to make sure I got this correct. No, actually, it's about the same power, water is 224 per 100 cubic feet for domestic water rates in the orchards, and if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Davies, our rate was about 235, so very similar, as far as that goes. So just so people know, I mean, it's not like we're living life O'Reilly. Every time we turn the water on, you know, irrigation water on, we're pumping weeds all over our yard, so consequently, we also have lousy-looking lawns up there in the orchards. I'm a recipient of one in my backyard particularly, so other than that, that's all I got. Anybody else? Council Blakely?
This is common along your water rates. Association of Idaho Cities does have available a chart comparing most of the water and sewer rates of all the major cities in the state of Idaho, and it's kind of interesting, we are not the highest, we are not the lowest. There are areas that are quite a bit more expensive than us, and some areas that are cheaper, but among the major cities, we are, and I say major cities, I'm talking about seven of them, we're right in the middle. It's interesting to see that in some of the areas. Your Lloyd bill, I think if you had looked a little bit further, you would have seen if you were a heavy user of domestic water, you would have seen your bill would have been higher than a downtown user. On a comparable basis, for what you and I use, it is a little cheaper, but the big user is more expensive. So it is interesting to see where these rates are.
Okay. Yeah, Council Randall?
Just to follow up on Mr. Council Blakely's information about the Association of Idaho Cities, what I got was a 2010 study, and according to this, 29% of the cities in Idaho have a water rate that's lower than ours, but 69% have a rate that's higher than ours. So we're doing pretty good, I think, as far as water. And as far as wastewater, we're about in the middle. 57% are higher and 41% are lower.
Thank you.
The other comment, I'll talk about water, is I know our water appears to be expensive, but as Councilor Randall says, there's a lot of places a lot more expensive than we are here in Lewiston. We are fortunate, though, that no one's telling you, at least in the downtown area, I can't, again, this does not apply to Lloyd, but in the downtown area served by the city of Lewiston, no one's telling you to stop watering. No one's telling you to limit the amount of water you're doing. We are fortunate, city of Lewiston, I won't say we have an unlimited amount of water to use, but we have come nowhere near of using the amount of water we have available to us, whereas in southern Idaho, I've gotten an education since being on the AIC, something called water calls. And you just wouldn't believe the politics that go on now in the Treasure Valley area that's involved with little towns, little teeny towns can literally run big cities dry because they have first rights on the wellhead because they were founded in 1855, and the city didn't come along until 1900. And the politics that's involved down in southern Idaho right now with water, as expensive or as cheap as you think our water is, we are fortunate that the quality of our water and the amount of water that we have available, it'll be years before someone tells you and the amount of water that we have available, it'll be years before someone tells you how much water you can put on your front lawn or on your garden in the city downtown area.
Anything else? Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. This past Thursday evening at the Lewiston Police Training Center, we had our first Thursday night meet and greet, if you will, for the public to come and meet our new chief, Chris Ankeny, and the command staff, to learn a bit about how our police department operates and what our plans are for the future. I thought it was very well attended, there were approximately 35 citizens there, probably 10 or so members of staff, good coverage by Clue Television, and I thought everyone stayed the full hour and a half, and then some to ask questions afterwards, so I thought it was a very successful start to that program, and as the chief said, you know, that it'll be a roadshow to some extent as well, they'll be taking it around the city to different locations, so that people will have an opportunity to, again, ask questions and get to meet our police department. This Saturday, as Counselor Collins said, of course, we'll have the Veterans Day Parade. That evening, there will also be a dinner for the veterans, which is traditionally held every year at the Elks Lodge in Lewiston, where there will be some opportunity to talk about the importance of Veterans Day and to pay tribute to our veterans at that event. And then, just a note, that our regularly scheduled council meeting this month for November 23rd, which is the Monday before Thanksgiving, has been rescheduled to the Monday after Thanksgiving, so that will be on November 30th.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Advisory Board and Commission appointments, do we have any this evening? I know we've got four applications for the Joint Airport Authority, so we're gonna try and schedule a time here, hopefully within the next week or so, maybe 10 days, to interview. We've got a couple repeats, and then we got a couple of new ones, so we're gonna try and get that organized. Still looking for people on the SWAC, I noticed the Solid Waste Advisory Commission had to cancel for lack of a quorum, so if we can't get anybody to sign up for the SWAC, call carry at City Hall. If you're not interested, maybe we might need to reconfigure the commission, so they can actually meet with a lower number of people.
Mr. Mayor, we still have two openings on the Transportation Department Commission, too.
Okay. Any others? I guess we'll, probably at the next meeting, we've got somebody that's up for reappointment on the MSAB Board and Historic Preservation. Or did we do that one?
We did that one.
Oh, that was Michelle. Okay. Okay, work session agenda topics, I think we're adding 18th Ave as an overview. Anything else? Okay, with this time, I'll entertain a motion by roll call vote to go into executive session, records exempt for disclosure, impending litigation under Idaho Code Section 74-206, Part N1, Part D, and Part F.
So moved. Sir.
Counsel Maldonado.
Aye.
Counselor Blakey.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg.
Aye.
Mayor Daniel.
Aye.
Counsel Dan.
Okay.
Counsel Collins.
Aye.
Counsel Randall.
Aye.
Okay. I guess that concludes the meeting for now. Thank you, everybody, for attending and watching. We're gonna take a three-minute break, and we'll reconvene.